All right, now being 6:36, I'll call the zoning planning board meeting to order Thursday, April 25th, 2024. So, first thing on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing to relocate a stone wall along a scenic road, a request by Michael Anderson, 77 Redstone Hill Road. Go ahead and I'll read the legal on that. Pursuant to Chapter 150, Scenic Roads of the Town of Sterling General Bylaws, notices hereby given to the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 25th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 205, Butterick Municipal Building, One Park Street, to consider an application for relocation of the stone wall, 77 Redstone Hill Road, Tax Map 91, Lot 7.2, designated scenic road, comes under our tree removal bylaw as well. So that's the legal. So that being said, we have Mike Anderson, the owner of the property here, so Mike, would you like to just come up and tell the board here what you've got in mind, what you want to do? I've seen the pictures.
Yeah. Basically, what I'm trying to do is hoping to put up a future barn on the property that's detached from the house, so it doesn't really take away from the house and it stays away from the septic. The section of stone wall that I'm trying to remove is actually covered in soil and dirt and everything, you really can't see the stone wall right now.
I went and looked at it, yep.
Yeah, so I'm actually, and I have two spaces on the property that are missing stone wall that is kind of always missing. I actually tried to fix them, but I was just using like rocks from the property that weren't, they don't look like the stone wall. So this will allow me to actually fix those two sections, so it'll kind of look like an actual full stone wall and then kind of like a separate little driveway entrance. And I've read the bylaws and everything about, you know, not going more than 18 feet, pulling the corners in so it, you know, keeps the structural integrity of the stone wall and everything. And I'm actually just trying to honestly like clean up that stone wall, because you really can't see it. And I actually like the look of the, you know, so I tried to fix it originally.
Yeah.
So.
It looks pretty bad, that one's still up there.
Yeah. Really just trying to open something up there, but in doing that, I'll be able to actually make it look a lot better and clean up the whole side of the road, basically.
So you want to take 18 feet out for potential future access to your barn?
Right.
And you're going to take those rocks and you're going to repair with those rocks that area that's dilapidated?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, Ryan has gone out and looked at it and has no issue, right from the DPW. I think it would be an overall improvement. Does anybody got any questions on it? Anybody, okay, have any questions on it? Okay, the only thing I want to tell you is just a little advice. Looking at your plan here, your barn is extremely close to your offsets, your septic and your sideline, it fits.
Yes.
So I'm just going to suggest you have an engineer stake that for you and save yourself a potential problem if you try and measure it.
So I have had, yeah, I don't have the actual engineer set of plans, but yeah, I had Farnsworth from Lancaster actually do the, you know, getting.
Yeah, because that's very close.
Yes.
You're off a foot in one direction or the other, you're going to have problems.
We know, and Russ Philpott actually drew that up for me, just, you know, it was very loose because I wanted to kind of have this meeting and everything before we got too far and made them plans and, you know, spending money I didn't.
All right, but I just wanted to let, you know. So welcome a motion that we approve his permit to relocate the wall.
So.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
If it'd be in the, in the conditions, when you send him his letter on the vote, just mention that he's relocating those stones into that broken down section. Okay, Mike, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Tell your father I said hello.
Will do.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, oh, we should probably vote to close the public hearing, right?
That would be a good idea.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
So.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Here we're closed. All right. So next, we have a public meeting to review a site plan for the construction of a new cell tower at 56 Kendall Hill Road, Tax Map 112, Lot 12. The applicant is Cell Co. Partnership Verizon. So before we get talking about this, I just want to explain a couple of things on how this works here. The use of this has already been approved through the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals. So a permit's already been issued for the use. Our job here tonight is just to regulate the site, okay? So we're not involved in any approval of this, we're just regulating the site. The approval's already been given for the use, so just want everybody to understand that. And then how it works is the engineer for the applicant will come up and he'll do his presentation and he'll tell us what they've got going on, what they want to do. After he's done, the board will ask any questions and then, once the board is done asking questions, they will open it up to the public. Okay, just so everybody knows how it works. So that being said, we have Michael Jamo?
Yes.
From, is it Chapel Engineering?
No, from Rouseville. Our guy from Chapel's here.
Okay.
He's had a long day. He's going to give the presentation.
All right.
He's going to help if there's questions.
Okay, so I wanted to set that up and you can.
That's great.
Explain to us.
Up there, is it, are they close or?
That'll work.
All right.
That'll work.
Whatever you just, the board, you've seen it before. So this is a proposal for a cell tower. It's lined up with the power lines and adjacent to the power lines, it's making use of the existing driveway that goes to the house in the back. At this point, it breaks off and uses a cart path that's there since the, since the power lines were put through, a little cart path, and then it cuts over to the tower compound. We got that approval from the ZBA last year. We told at the time we didn't need the site plan review based on the bylaw because there's no parking, there's no square footage of gross floor area. The building inspector has a different view now, so we're back in front of you. I disagree with him, I just want to say I'm reserving my rights as to that, but I do want to present the project to you and I think you'll see it's not a problematic project anyway. This facility is very similar to other cell towers that you've seen, different places. It's got a base compound, the compound's going to have equipment in it, it's also got a pad for the town to use because the fire department has asked to have, to have some space in the tower compound. Here's a close-up of the compound on sheet A1. And that's the fire department's pad there. Through discussion with your consulting engineer, Greg had some discussions and changed some of the drainage for the driveway, created a box culvert underneath a section of the driveway where the consultant was concerned it was going to back up.
Are you showing it on this plan?
Yeah, it's on this plan, yep. And what was the other thing that you changed?
Any grading on the driveway?
I'm sorry, what?
Flow of water, did you change the grade of the driveway?
The driveway is actually following the existing terrain. We're not making modifications to that. Up here is where the pipe culvert was, because there's a drainage ditch that runs alongside the existing driveway. And as we peel off from there, you know, that area will have to be raised, so in an effort to get the water to continue to flow through and ultimately underneath where we're cutting in, the drainage has been added per Graves Engineering, the peer review. So that's been added to the plans. And we've also, we've also added, we mentioned that we wanted to see the access road, oh no, I'm sorry. Is it the cross-section? Yeah, the cross-section right here.
Board members, I did receive the revised site plan today and I sent it off to Graves and they're going to take another look-see at it.
This is just the elevation drawing.
And his last comment dealt with documentation of compliance with DEP stormwater regs. Where are you with that?
So I spoke to Jeff earlier today on the phone. We came to a pretty good understanding that they, basically the access road in following the existing terrain and given what's on the perimeter, it's not really like dirt that's subject to washout, it's really, it gets tall grass, you know, tall grass growth and everything, so it's going to handle the water pretty well. He was in agreement with me, but he wants to, he wants to kind of, he wants me to kind of go through and sort of offer a letter, basically, you know, for, you know, certifying against the DEP, you know, the Mass DEP stormwater regs.
Just copy me on that letter if you would.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's, yeah, that's pretty much the project in a nutshell.
Okay, so as far as, let me, let me just read off the comments from peer review. The hydrology and stormwater management, the proposed project is a commercial facility as such must comply with the Mass DEP stormwater standard and the stormwater handbook, but you haven't done that yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Document needs to be, documentation needs to be submitted to demonstrate construction phase and long-term operation compliance with the standards and the handbook. Number three, in addressing the Mass DEP stormwater standards and to minimize the potential for long-term erosion caused by concentrated runoff, the design engineer should refrain from directing stormwater from the new driveway to the intersection of the new driveway and existing driveway. Read that again. Should refrain from directing stormwater from the new driveway to the intersection of the new driveway and the existing driveway. The intersection already receives stormwater runoff from the existing driveway.
That's the box culvert. Yeah, that's right here. At the intersection.
Right. Yep, I'm getting to that. The design engineer should strive to discharge runoff from the new driveway at multiple locations and may wish to consider the use of rain gardens or similar BMPs. Four, there is an existing roadside swale upgraded to the intersection of the existing driveway and the new driveway. The swale is approximately one foot deep and three feet wide, where it is located under the electric transmission wires. A culvert of a similar hydraulic capacity to the swale needs to be provided under the new driveway. And you've done that. That's what you're showing there?
Correct.
Okay, so that's been done. A construction detail for the gravel driveway showing the proposed driveway width, gravel specifications, gravel thickness should be added to the site plan.
That's, yeah, that's, that was added to the sheet.
Okay. GEI did not review information pertaining to the wireless communication equipment or structures, such a view is not in scope of the site plan review. So, I mean, for me, I think we need to get the DEP, Mass DEP stormwater standard issue ironed out before we can issue any kind of approval. We're not going to have to put the culvert into the conditions because we already see it on that, so we can take it off your draft of conditions. Other than that, that's what I would like to see before we issue any kind of approval on that. We need to get that straightened out. That's something that we can't keep track of if that doesn't happen, so.
So it's been set to Jeff, he'll review it, have a conversation with you, you're going to submit something to him in writing.
Correct.
And copy me on it. I'll let everyone know once I hear back from Jeff, from Graves.
Now, we're having, we're having another meeting on the 16th of May, so providing we have a warm, if we have that ironed out for the 16th, you can come on back in and then we'll revisit it, so you won't have to wait until next month's meeting.
I know that it's a four o'clock meeting, it was originally scheduled with a working session.
Yeah.
So it's 4:00 PM, right in this room, on Thursday, May 16th.
Yeah, we could kill two birds with one stone. We could kill two birds with one stone. There'll be a work session, we'll be here, as long as we have a.
They're the only application we have before us at this time.
So I'd say I'd take the most of it, we continue.
So you want to get the public comments, why?
Oh, thank you, all right, thank you. Okay, any questions up here? We all set?
I just have one question on the driveway. When you get a lot of rain, will that gravel get washed away?
I mean, it's going to be compacted, you know, these things kind of are subject to, you know, long-term maintenance and kind of repair work since it's not a paved driveway. But there's enough personnel going in and out of there, you know, on a semi-regular basis, where if there's damage to the road, like, you know, ruts start, might start to develop. Those get repaired, you know, over the course of time. The road is actually, ends up being plowed when the snow comes and as such, it needs, you know, it needs to be repaired and it's basically, it's basically upkept, you know, like ma- maintained over the course of its lifetime.
Yeah, not paving any of that, right?
Correct, no paving.
Okay, all right. So I'll open it up to the public here, if we have any questions, I'll take them one at a time. Go ahead.
I have questions, I have comments, but perhaps a question might come off as a sort of that?
Okay.
So I'm Roland Marinello and I live at 3 Adam Taylor Road. So being one of the butters, I had received notification about the meeting back last fall and this one as well. Perhaps this isn't the time or place, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe a balloon test, a red balloon test or whatever was ever performed, you know, for this project. And so I want to, but not to be sure, I want to ask the board if they've received any photos, if any photos been submitted to the planning board that would show from various locations what the visual impact of this is going to be on town. Now, hear me out, I don't think it's a stretch, okay? Because when I do a research of what's taking place with cell towers in various towns throughout Massachusetts and other states, this is a topic on planning board agendas, the balloon test. And they've specifically asked for it and I've seen cases where it does come after the zoning board has approved the project. Now, I raised this question with the zoning board and it fell on deaf ears, okay? It just got pushed through that evening, but let me, let me finish, okay? Just please be patient with me. Assuming that you don't have any photos, what does the impact, what impact will it have on the landscape? A balloon, a balloon test will provide a visual representation of what the tower would look like from the surrounding area. I think that's important. We also need to take into account, and I might be jumping off of subject, but I know other carriers are going to jump on this. The minute that tower goes up 120 feet, and this was also mentioned by the zoning board, and I think it was in the stuff that we got in the mail, the moment that tower goes up, other carriers are going to jump on, okay? Because it's, you know, it's a co-locate, is what they call it, and it's encouraged by the town that they do that. So, you know, what we're looking at today, you know, is a small representation, I think, of what it could be tomorrow, what it could be. So, again, zoning officials and the public will have a better understanding of the height and the impact of the tower if we do a balloon test.
Board members, do you know what a balloon test is? They float up the balloon to the height of the tower and it gives people a sense as to how high it's going to be, a visual representation.
And again, I don't think it's a stretch to look at this subsequent to the board's approval, okay? So it's up to you to weigh this, but I think it's a legitimate concern. Second, you know, as a matter of fact, I visited the board, the planning board room earlier and looked at the plans. And quite frankly, I can't see, I can't get good visual, maybe I will looking at this, but I don't get a visual as to exactly where is this going to be. I know it's going to be near three poles that cross, that hold the power lines. I think if that's the case, from my bedroom window, I can see one of those poles. So I would imagine, once we put up 120-foot tower, okay, that thing is going to soar. I mean, that's going to, unless there's a valley, okay, unless it dips down significantly on that side of the power lines, if it's level ground with the power lines, that thing is going to look like one big monster and I think that, you know, we ought to bring that to a head and take a look at it, whether you put a balloon up there, bring a crane in that's 120 feet, but I think you need to do it.
Mr. Chairman, just so I can, if you don't mind, I thought this was already approved by the ZBA and we're not.
And that's where I was going.
And that's what I just said, yeah.
Right, so again, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, our job is just to regulate the site, make sure the site is proper, runoff, drainage, all that stuff. The use, the tower, all that goes to the ZBA and they've already approved all that. And so if anybody was thinking of a balloon test or anything like that, that would have been in their purview, it's not in our purview at all.
But it's part of your purview as far as the impact as part of planning on the whole landscape, is it not? You're looking at the landscape from the ground level, but what about the landscape from, you know, above that?
That goes with the use, okay? And the use was approved by the ZBA, we're just regulating the site. So the use is the tower. The tower was going there, was it approved? Yes, it was. So if it's a 120-foot tower, the 120-foot tower was approved on the site and we're making sure that the site is graded properly and they follow our regulations on site plan.
Okay, so Verizon was successful for pulling the wool over the zoning board's eyes, so that's, that's what it boils down to. Because they did not, they did not listen to me the first time, okay, and say, yeah, why not put a balloon up there? They put a balloon up on the water tank up there 10 years ago, when the plan was then, to put this tower on top of the water tank. They put a red balloon up, but in this case here, they chose not to, because they know what the result would be.
And it's proved.
I don't know how in good conscience you can serve on a planning board and not look at all aspects of the landscape and the visual impact of that. So, for the record, you know, it should be on the record that I voiced my concern.
Thank you for that. Do we have anybody else?
And I would like to look at that before they take it down.
John, you can view it anytime during the day, too.
I didn't see it in there today.
Steve, where is the plan?
It's in my office and it's also online. If you go to the planning board webpage, over in the left-hand menu, there's a, there's a thing called pending development applications. If you click it, all of the documentation that's been submitted for this project can be found there.
But I was trying to pinpoint using the poles, utility poles, as a marker.
Were you able to show where, do you know where the poles are on site?
Dave, do you know?
I could bring you there.
I know where they are.
I would love to come there.
I can bring you there because.
Yeah, I could bring you there.
I would love to walk the property.
Yeah, I know, it's, it does drop off, by the way.
Not very much.
Okay, hold on.
Well, whatever, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one at a time. Okay, you would raise your hand?
Yeah.
You're up, so could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, I will. So I'm Jill Manjo and I'm at 62 Kendall Hill Road. So our property is right along the edge of Sally's. It runs from, can I come up and show you?
Sure.
So our driveway is right here on the map and so it runs by here and then the house is here. So I understand, for the record, I get the use of it, I understand the safety, the fire down at the reservoir, I totally get that. But I, I have, I do have some concerns because this tower, I believe, is like 100 feet from my property line.
So it's more than 125, that's the?
Yeah, so I walked it, I took my measuring little guru thing out and I walked it. No, I guessed, though.
Okay, well, I guess you were a bit off by about 25 feet.
So by 25 feet, yes.
So 125 feet.
Okay, so I'll measure once you build it.
Okay.
I'm giving you a hard time. I'm giving you a hard time. So, but my, that's not, that, obviously I would have loved it if you, if you guys had stuck it further on her property than close to mine, but what I'm afraid of is, my driveway comes down here, you're going to clear out this, and here's where my drive, so it dips down and then it comes back up. We already get runoff in this part of our driveway from the surrounding area. What is the impact? Have you done any measurement of the impact of the water and storm? I know you're really careful about Sally's property in this little doohickey here, but I want to know, have you looked to see what's going to happen with the water when you do that? It's my property.
I was just going to flip it over to the site plan itself, so.
Yeah.
The only clearing is going to be within that square area, there's not, this is all going to stay the same as it is now. And what the board talked about earlier in the meeting was Greg here has to provide a stormwater report to the peer consultant.
Because I'd like to know, to be honest with you, like, we already have enough drainage or runoff to that. It goes on my driveway and you guys can all come and look at it, goes like this and then like that. And at that point where it dips here, we already get a good, like, I, it gets, you know, it gets full.
He has to make sure that the stormwater.
Like, I don't want more.
Is not going to get off in property. That's one of the things he has to make sure.
So how do I know, how am I going to know as you're building this thing?
We'll have to get the stormwater report. We're going to get that.
They're going to get that, the building inspector's going to review.
But how do I, how do I?
When I get a copy, you can get a copy and review it with an engineer of your choice to make sure that it's legit.
Now, I'm not, I'm not an expert, so how do I know? You know, like, let's say a year down the line, I'm like floating through my little puddle at the end of my driveway, somebody coming to kind of come back and fix it?
That'll be up to you to take their drainage study.
Yeah.
And have it vetted.
That's how you would.
Our engineer, the planning board's engineer is going to vet it on behalf of the town.
I hope they're good. Yeah, I just want that to be known, that I'm very concerned about that. You know, we've got a big dip after, after the tower, it dips off.
And, but just to be really clear, there's going to be vegetation here, nothing standing in there.
There's not, I'll tell you, you have walked the area.
Yeah, no, it's kind of scrubbed.
Have you walked there? So I walk there every day. And there is not much vegetation in this area at all.
Right, and that's one of the reasons we don't need to clear much vegetation in the building.
Yeah, people were talking about big trees and big roots, that does not exist here.
There's, there's old, there's old apple trees. Yeah, there's an old apple.
Those apple trees are like here.
So this, if I may discuss it, this particular area which was walked by our survey. We spent two days surveying and geography and in those two days, we identified every single tree that exists in the entire region.
Right, but they're scruffy, they're dying, they're not, like, we're not talking about healthy vegetation in this area, they're half-dead.
I understand, but there's, you know, and there's, you know, there's a lot of tall growth, a lot of tall grass, you know, it's not, it's not like, you know, kind of a, for lack of a better term, just a dirt mound of a hill or, or.
No, I mean, there's, yeah, there is vegetation, but it's not high. And I listened to the meeting from last, so my other concern, so that was number one, so I'll check with you on the reports, but my other concern is, you know, I come down my driveway and if anyone's going to see the tower, it's me, and if anyone's property's going to see a dip in their value, it's mine. When somebody comes, if I ever choose to sell my property, they're going to drive down here and there's going to be this big tower with a big, huge fence around it that they're going to see. Like, right now, you drive there and you see, you see the wires, yes, we still have that, but now there's going to be, it's just going to get more and more. So has anyone considered adding some type of vegetation barrier around that in this area here so that we're not looking at the, you know, just to make it look nicer? Like, that's a site management, right? I'm hoping that that's something that somebody would consider.
You planning any kind of landscaping around the fenced area or anything like that?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you planning any kind of landscaping around the fenced area?
Currently, none, none is proposed.
I mean, even if you just did it on this side and this side, just to, you know, or at least just on this side, I understand there's requirements around vegetation because they kind of clear that all the time, but even if it was on that side, just to, you know, we're talking about, like, you know, we live in beautiful Sterling, on the top of Kendall Hill Road, it's gorgeous up there.
Yeah, historic.
And, yeah, and it just seems like such a waste to let, like, I get the reason why we're doing this, I get it, but can we do it in a way that sort of keeps the, you know, beauty of the, as best we can in that area? It's not that much more. you know, beauty of the, as best we can in that area? It's not that much money to do a little bit of landscaping to help look, make it look a little better. And that, that's, that's my request.
And there's only so much you can do. It's 120 feet.
No, I know, you can't do anything up here. Around the equipment would be, would be lovely. People walk there all the time. My neighbors and I, we take the dogs, we walk around.
Can it be seen from the road?
Yeah, the tower?
No, the area that you're talking about.
Uh, yes, you can see, if you, if you drive by my driveway, you can, can see right down, down there, yeah. It's right near the three poles.
Any other board members got any comments on that? Asking for any landscaping around that area? Some adverities or something like that to provide a little screening?
Yeah, where's the access gonna be to them?
The access is around the back.
Okay. All right. So, if you did put some, some type of greenery right there, it wouldn't interfere with your access then, correct?
It would not interfere with access.
Along, along the southern edge.
Right.
No, it would not.
Would you have any objection from doing some, uh, some greenery there?
It's 125 feet off the property line. I mean, yeah, we'll put some adverities in. That's fine. It's not a big deal.
Okay, got it in writing.
Okay, adverities exactly where now?
Yeah, let's mark the plant exactly where.
Can you do it on, on this edge too, or no? Like, can we do it like, like a little
L? Is that possible?
So the area that we're talking is here?
Oh, yeah, maybe the next sheet, this is here.
Yeah.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger site.
So this is just rotated slightly on the next sheet?
This is her property line.
Yeah. You know, so we're talking...
Like, maybe here, yeah? Like, is that possible? Like, just to kinda do a little, yeah?
We can block their access.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand. Cause the trees are over here. This is the rest of the...
So we're looking at...
The dots, those dots are all trees.
No, but I mean, then that goes into the woods that way, right?
So we're looking, so basically an L shape is what you're looking for down, down here.
So give some screening, it'll give some screening.
Yeah.
And this is gravel?
Yes, it's all gravel.
So I have enough, can I go into my next request or will I do this one? I have one more.
Well, let, let's start with this, let's finish this one. Um, if you would add that to the plan, please?
Add that for the next time you can.
Adverities, six feet apart.
Yeah.
Six footers.
How tall is the gate?
I'm sorry, what? Gonna wait on this, okay?
Write, write all you want.
How tall is the fence that goes around that? Is it six feet?
Uh, this particular fence, I need to take a look and see what it is.
I think it's six.
It would be six feet.
Usually six feet.
If it goes handed, if it goes in on anything like this, they get on the screening, they grow quickly.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm good with that. I'm just...
One foot?
Uh, if, if a fence is over six feet, the building commissioner considers it a structure needing a building permit.
So it's not over six feet?
Probably the building permit for the tower, but the typical, typical, uh, it's eight foot.
Yeah, currently we're calling it eight.
Eight feet.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That's a, oh, we need a building permit to put the tower up. So we're, we're good.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the, so the six-foot adverities.
Six footers, six feet apart.
And they grow and they'll cover the eight feet and probably 10 feet and 12 feet.
Yes, thank you. That's easy, right?
You feel good enough to do that?
Yeah.
That's, that's great, yeah. And I have one more request, and it's Steve, help, it's Steve, right? Did I get it?
Yes.
Just help me with the wording on this. I would like to have it added into the conditions. Am I saying this right?
Yeah.
That, so often what happens is the people who need to work on the line will use, come in and park in my, on my property with their trucks. And usually, or national grid, it's fine, cause their trucks are not huge. But my concern is that what's gonna happen is it's easier to get to here through my driveway and property and people don't see my house. So they just think, oh, let's just take this road, um, versus going all the way around and doing this. I would like it to be a condition that nobody enters through the property by my driveway.
Yeah, that's a no-brainer.
But I just, you, you, I want it written in there, because if I see people coming in, I'm gonna call somebody, let's just say.
The chairman just showed.
Yes, cause a lot of times they just don't know.
This is not...
They need to know that that's not their entrance. And I don't want to have the argument, like, on and off deliveries or, or trucks.
Yeah, if, if memory serves, no one would be able to really cross this without, 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 like, a four-wheeler anyway, like, no one's gonna, cause...
Oh, no, they do. They park right in here. And they, cause right around there's like a stone wall here.
You thought, okay, national grid?
Yeah, they'll park along here, or they'll park on this side.
But that's okay, we can take a condition that says...
Yeah, yeah, they just can't do it. Like, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Right, but let's get a condition.
Yeah, like, if I don't put signs, like, cause somebody, cause you, like, I think you said, oh, just put no parking signs or something. I don't wanna put that on my driveway. You know, it'll skate.
That's fine.
Now, so why does not national grid come up here?
No, they don't, because this is her private driveway, right?
They might not have an access, they go on your...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they come in and, like, that's fine. Their, their trucks are small.
We'll take care of the problem.
Building.
Okay, let's not belabor the point.
Yeah, you got it, you got it. I'm what you're asking for.
Okay, all right. So, we put something on there that they'll stay on for her, her, her property. And that's, that's a no-brainer right there. That's an easy one. So, um, thank you very much for agreeing to the, to the landscape. Do we have any more questions out there?
Yeah, my time is...
I'm all set with you. We're gonna go to somebody else. Um, let's take your name and address, please.
No, you don't have to get up.
You don't have to get up, no.
Um, I don't know where the planning board was when this lady moved in.
Who?
Ali McGuire, 50 Rock Inn.
Okay, all right, all right.
Um, when she moved in, I don't know where you guys were, but she put in a road, not a driveway, a road. And I had those people there for days with a machine that went like this all day long. Okay? One night, I was sitting in the great room watching TV. Thank God my son was upstairs. I heard a loud explosion. I went, what was that? I immediately went to the kitchen stove. I have a gas, propane gas stove. And I saw a flame coming from underneath it. So I reached underneath and I shut the gas off. And I had my son go out and turn the gas thing. And I called my gas company the next day. And he came out and I told him what was going on. And underneath the cabinet, there's a gas pipe that came in and it goes onto the burners. Well, from the, doing this, it came loose. It came undone. So the gas was coming into the house. And he said to me, thank God nobody smoked here, you know, like, he went to bed and something lit it, it would've exploded. You would've got killed. The whole house would've gone. Why did nobody check on that? I mean, that, that is pretty scary. And, and the other thing, too, is I gotta find out where my house is. But this lady, you can tell she's not my favorite lady. But anyways, everything she got delivered, she got delivered to my house. One day, I went to leave from my garage. She had an appliance delivered in front of my door. I went, oh, this is lovely. Didn't care. I had to find, track down her sister, because she's never there. She doesn't care about any of this stuff. But I almost...
Yeah, because we, we, our, our job here tonight is we're talking about the site.
I understand that, and I am too.
Really, it's, it's irrelevant. So if you could just make your point on what it might be in relation to the job, to the, to the site.
Okay, okay. When they do the construction, where are the trucks going? What are they interfering with out there? Where are they gonna deliver stuff? How is that gonna all affect the surrounding neighbors?
Show us where the deliveries are coming and where the trucks are going in and going out.
Well, everything, everything is going to be along, along this path.
And that path is where in relationship to all her property?
So...
Her driveway, and then it turns off.
Okay, her driveway is right next to my house.
The Beckwith property?
Yes.
So, yes, this is, this is her, this is her existing driveway up until right about here. And then we peel off, her driveway peels up to the north and proceeds to her house. So we, we peel off right here underneath, underneath the national grid power lines. Um, and then that's where all, any, any deliveries, any personnel, any, any construction vehicles, everything is gonna be channeled through here and only through here.
So in relation to Kendall Hill Road and the entrance?
This is Kendall Hill Road right here.
Right, so you're going up her driveway?
Yes, it already exists.
Which is like right outside my, my house.
It already exists.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I, I understand she's getting paid well to do this, but I'm not. And I have to put up with all the inconvenience. And she's never there. So I'm the one that has to listen to the trucks. I don't know how long it's gonna go on. I did, I did have experience with somebody else having it put in. It wasn't pleasant. So I know it goes on. You know, they have to have the truck slug and everything in there. And I have to deal with it. So...
Well, it won't last forever.
She's got 62 acres.
I want to think the construction, it takes from stack to finish.
Takes about a month.
All right.
I have...
There's a lot of downtime, because the foundation has to cure it. So there's a lot of, that might be a week's worth of work. And like a 28-day cure for the foundation, maybe some minor things. But then, um, it's, it's not, it's about a month, month and a half.
And these sites, once they're open active, the sites are basically monitored remotely. They're actually upgraded remotely so that cell technicians don't visit the sites like they used to about once a month. They basically don't visit them all at, at all unless there's an issue. So the traffic is less and less with the newer sites, once they're built.
Do they have insurance on all this for those surrounding neighbors? If anything gets damaged or hurt?
I'm sure, I'm sure whoever the contractor is that's building it carries insurance if they want to damage somebody's property by mistake or something like that.
Yeah, we couldn't get a permit without, without providing one.
It's required. Any other questions from the public? Mike?
Yes, Mike Cadula, David Road. Um, I was noticing, you said that the driveway, they're gonna use the driveway. I was just wondering if the planning board was gonna put in order conditions or anything as far as putting rip wraps or any, when it's wet, any mud or anything else comes out in the road? Or is her driveway that they're gonna use as a blacktop or anything else as far as, you know, helping the mud and everything else coming out in the road if it rains? And the rip wrap can always be taken out after, as you know, Cal. So I just didn't know if that was part of the order of conditions or you could put that in there, but just to help the neighbors so there's no mud tracked in the road.
I'm not so sure. There'd be mud way down there. That's already an established gravel driveway right there, so.
It's about a quarter mile.
It, it's a, yeah, it's like a quarter mile. But I, I understand what you're talking about. Sub technicians do that. They'll put 40 feet or 50 feet of a rip wrap or a stone to kinda try and knock some of the mud on the tires on the way out.
Right, cleans it.
This is really far in.
Okay, just checking.
Her, her driveway is, is, is a crushed stone driveway. It's in pretty good shape.
Right.
It's all pointed drive, pointed rocks.
Yeah, it's like a crushed stone that can kinda sort of interlock.
It traps the mud out of it.
Yeah, I used to deliver packages to her little rock she put out if I got her mail. Finally, I said, this is it. Anything comes here now, I keep it. She stopped.
Okay, anything else?
Did you say my time was up?
Your time is up. Thank you.
I have just one quick question. When is it gonna start?
It hasn't been approved yet.
No, I mean, it hasn't been approved.
It's been approved, but...
Right. Once we, once the site plan is approved, then they can go ahead at that point and go for their permit. And then, where they start, I don't know. We'll have to see where they get, when they get their permit, make sure in two weeks they come in, the plan's...
What's your construction timetable? Assuming they get...
Yeah, that's, that's tough, it's tough, it's tough to say, because, I mean, Verizon Wireless is building probably 200 sites this year, so it has to fit into the scheduling and the logistics of which sites are prioritized. So there's nothing holding it back. It's not, um, a priority, let's say. Um, so it'll be, it'll be built in a normal course of time. Um, upon all appeal periods, things will be queued for equipment ordering. The found, the geotech has to be done, which is soil borings for the foundation design and tower design before I comply for the permit. So all this stuff takes time. It could be 10 to 12 months before, um, anyone's onsite actually making noise.
So if it gets approved, are you telling me that it's gonna take a year before you stack construction?
It could.
Your site plan will be good for a year.
Year only.
So...
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be applying, I'll be applying for the permit punctually, getting the GCs lined up and all that kinda thing. But then as far as the, you know, it does, it takes more time than people realize.
So if it gets to be next April and you haven't begun construction yet, gotta come to the board and get an extension.
I'd do it all the time, Kay.
Just so you know. Is that it? All right. That being said, then, anything else, you guys? Then, how about more? Should we just, we continue this to the 16th?
Some more.
Sorry, guys?
On favor, hi. Steve, guys on the 16th?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hold on a minute. I didn't realize I'm a taxpayer. I'm really limited in the amount of time. We only have one opportunity to speak. Thank you.
We heard what you have to say.
Thank you.
Hi.
Uh, yeah, just wanted to take a look.
Folks, if you could take it outside the door, have other business to do.
Yep. So next thing on the agenda is the May...
Nope, site plan homework.
Site plan homework.
In advance of our working session, as on the afternoon of May 16th...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Folks.
Nick?
Could you guys just go on the hall, please? Thank you.
In advance of our working session on site plan review regulations, we've got a homework for you. I would like you folks to think about commercial and industrial sites in the area that you think have done a good job in terms of their site design, that they look nice.
Doesn't have to be in Sterling.
Doesn't have to be in Sterling. In your travels, if you, if you saw commercial development or industrial development that you saw, they did a good job designing it. Tell me what that is. Tell me what town it's located in, and I will get your site plan regulations. And we'll let them over to, to pick out what makes sense for us in Sterling. All right?
I have a good question.
Yeah.
And something that comes to my mind is not in Sterling. And they're a very large outfit. And Fort Devens is on what he say. Um, you can't really justify, they have gas, they have, you know, they...
Sewerage.
Sewerage, they, you know, um, you can't use that as an example, because their, their, um, their regs are not the same as ours. So it has to be...
That's the point.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm trying to understand your point, that's all.
If, if you tell me what town the development is in, I pull their site plan regulations that that site was probably built to.
Okay.
And I bring it to us, and we look at those site regs and say, well, that makes sense for Sterling.
See what makes sense.
This one does, this one doesn't. We're gonna be writing site plan regulations that are gonna apply to all the commercial and industrial development wherever it is in town. Right now, when you look at a site plan, you don't have any standards to go by. It's all whatever you can agree to with the applicator.
We don't have a landscape, uh, we don't have a landscape.
You know, I use Welltech for as an example. They're from Sterling. I don't know them, but I've, I've seen them come to the board before. There are two or three projects that they have done in this town are aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. I would ask that you look for examples outside of Sterling.
Okay, no, I...
Sterling doesn't have site plan regulations. It's been my experience that a developer will comply with your standards if you, if they know what they are, if you articulate them within the regulations. they know what they are, if you articulate them within the regulations.
Okay, all right.
So I'm looking for you to tell me, well, I like such and such a site in Acton or Marlboro or wherever, uh, and if you can snap a picture, so much the better, picture's worth a thousand words.
Makes a lot of sense.
So our consultant is going to be here on the afternoon of the 16th, and he's pulling together some example site plan regulations from comparable communities to ours, um, and we're gonna talk about what standards we'd like to have for our regulations.
Okay.
All right?
It's a, be a great example.
Okay.
It works.
Um, that'll be our kickoff meeting with him, he's gonna get a sense for what we want for standards, and then he'll come back with a draft, and then another draft, and however many drafts it takes until we're satisfied that we've got something that we want. When you get, say, consultant, is it a federally sponsored grant, is that? No, we've, we've got, uh. That's why I asked. We've got leftover, um, unspent, uh, personnel money for the time that you didn't have a claim.
Okay.
So, uh, Verone talked about like 6, 6,000, I think that was a.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a big money. All right, so that's your homework.
That's our homework. I have just one question, John, will you be able to make the 16th?
I don't know if I will, that's, that's the whole thing, it's, it's hard, you know, I'm, I'm on the wind down program, but I don't wanna ask yes if it's.
It's gonna be the three of us again, because Mike wasn't at this, at this hearing for this, so he won't be able to vote. Well, actually.
Well, he can.
He can, he gets one moment, so he'll be able to.
If he reviews the material and gives him. Once the election. Yeah, um, first we can make, so we'll have a new. So we will have a new planning board member then. I believe Kirsten Newman's husband is running. He is, I saw him on television. Okay. So Mike, um, even if Mike begs off the Verizon hearing, he can still join us for the working session.
I just wanna make sure we have a quorum, that come back in with that plan, that we can be, we can vote on it, so.
It probably won't, but that's.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, I, I understand. All right, so our next meeting will be the 16th at 4:00 PM. We'll knock out Verizon, and hopefully we can show out the, uh, hand revisions for Jack between now and then, and that just leaves the minutes.
The minutes. I've read the minutes.
I have too.
So I'll take a motion, we approve the minutes of March 28th, 2024.
Someone?
Second?
No favor?
Aye.
Okay, before you split.
I'm not gonna split up, right?
I wanna let you know that, um, now that those economic development forums in March are over with, I've written up the bylaw changes that I wanna bring to the 2025 town meeting.
Okay.
What I wanna do is add an explanatory introduction, this is the issue, this is what we're proposing, um, and so, so, something that'll explain what we're doing to the public.
Yep.
So that they don't look at this, at, at a new table of newses and say, what the hell is this? So I've got that, I just need to add the introductory explanations, but the bylaw language, I've got drafts up, by mid-May, I'm gonna be able to get it out to the planning board members. I wanna give you folks first crack at offering revisions, once we have something that we're comfortable, I'm hoping by July, we can post it online, and then I can begin the long and arduous process of going around to every board, commission, and committee, and explaining what we're doing and why we're doing it.
And when do you wanna send that to us?
Um, once I get those introductory explanations written up. So long around mid-May, I'm gonna be able to send you this.
Okay.
So all this stuff, Steve, that I, that I, that you were, you're gonna do this, um, they were the taxpayers that came to the, your one meeting was run by you, um, so basically it's their input that? It's, it's, it's based on the input we received at the two public forums we had in March. I understand, I saw the email that you sent, so. Nothing radical. Yep. A, a lot of it is just good government, uh, good sense, uh, ways to handle our business that we're not doing now.
Makes sense.
All right, so we're gonna have a good nine months to shop this around and get everybody comfortable with what we're doing, we'll have a couple more public forums in the fall, so that when we get to the May town meeting 2025, no surprises to anyone, everybody knows what we're doing, and they're comfortable with it. That's how you do zoning amendments.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
All right, that's, that's all I got for you.
Absolutely.
I will say that I've gotten many calls on like the downtown, not different venue, on the downtown area, the sidewalks, that they're not being taken care of. You know what we're doing. Um, we've got, we've got engineering plans for a revamp of the village center.
Okay, well sidewalks are building.
They gotta be digging them up.
They should.
And with it. I've walked it myself, and it's not, it's not pretty. So those plans. You know, and I'm old, so. Those plans, they've been working on them for three or four years now, and now they're done, and now we're about to go for the construction grant to fund the construction.
Okay.
It'll fix the drainage problems in the village center, you get new sidewalks, you get new lighting, you get new landscaping. So it's like downtown Westminster or Clinton, and I use it as, or, or Hudson? We're gonna, we're applying for it in June, we'll know if we got it in the fall, and construction will begin next year.
Okay.
It's the right way to do it.
All right? Yeah, you can't make changes if you don't know what you're doing. Yeah, well, those plans have been a long time coming, and they're finally done. Yeah, I, I think that, um, on a different venue, I think that Ryan does a great job for the DPW.
He is so fire.
I can see, I can see, just as a taxpayer, just driving around, the cemeteries and every, he, he's just, he just.
He's on top of.
He knows what he's, what he's doing. Someone who's worked with a bunch of DPW directors, I rate him right up there at the top. Yeah, there's no question, well, that's because he's a PE. I hate to say that, it does help.
And it's a rarity, you don't see a lot of them.
And you take a look at, with the equipment, how they treat the equipment, that equipment is cleaned, washed, put away, they were just doing it for the winter time, all the winter[1762.72]